All right, well, we'll get started. All right, I'm gonna call a meeting of the City Council Lake Mills for July 21st to order, and just be patient with us, we're having a few technical difficulties tonight. So, could I get the roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch? Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Is that all of them? Okay. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, for those of you that can, please rise, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Little feedback. All right, that moves us onto item four, Correction and/or Approval of the City Council Meetings, Meeting Minutes of July 7th, 2020, do I have a motion?
So move to approve.
Mr. Fields to approve, do we have a second?
Ms. Schmidt a second.
Ms. Schmidt is second. Let's go ahead and call the roll call vote.
Diane?
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch, are you present yet?
He doesn't have his mic turned on.
He's not on yet.
Okay. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
All right, let's move on to number five, Correspondence. I guess we'll start with Mr. Fields, do you have anything?
Yes, I had several of them, Jason at 977 Pinnacle, he contacted me a couple times by email and also by phone, and I met with him twice in person to see, he's having issue with golf carts running through his yard when they're crossing Pinnacle. Also down on Pinnacle, I talked to Kevin, who's almost a quarter from him, about drainage during the big rain event that we had a week ago. Also Melissa Furman and Annie, or I'm sorry, Melissa Furman contacted me about the Upper Tyranina Bike Trails and thanked us for putting it on hold for a little while. And then I received two calls from, one from Annie Warner and one from Gwen over on Woodland Beach Road. During the rain event, they also had water that was pretty much up to their stoop at the houses. The road flooded out, but it eventually subsided when the rain lit up. That's all for me.
All right, thank you. Ms. Schmidt, do you have anything?
Yes, I received correspondence from Donna Thomas regarding Tyranina Park Trails, the bike trails.
Okay. Diane?
Yes, I also received the correspondence from Donna Thomas, and I also received an email from Mrs. Weidra in Mulberry, which I will pass on to Brian Kane.
All right, thank you. Excuse me. So I've received a couple calls also from 977 Pinnacle about the golf carts and the issues there. The same letter that everybody else received, I received that concerning the bikes down in Tyranina Park. And I did receive an email asking some questions whether or not we were going to entertain a ordinance for masks, and as it stands right now, we don't have anything pending. And that's it. All right, that moves us into questions and public comment. One of those days, now my pen quits working. Questions and public comment, the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding any items on the agenda. Comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when inserting your comments. And for the folks in the room, fill in the sign-in sheet, and if you're making comments online, put your information in the chat function. Do we have anybody that's in the room that wants to talk? I think everybody's here for an agenda item, correct? Steve, do we have anybody online that's here for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll close the public comment, and we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
There was nothing attached to the agenda this time. I did wanna note that South Main Street is essentially done. They're just doing some cleanup and some final grading and seeding, but most of the items are complete. There's a couple sewer and chimney castings that need to be put in. But other than that, it's, the state's gonna consider it done. Mulberry Street, they've asked us to consider taking a deduct. So in other words, they're not gonna pay them for the grading and seeding, and then the city will have to take care of it.
Does that mean they would pay us?
Well, in this case, the grant works a little bit different. The grant was capped at 1.3 million. So everything over the 1.3 million was 100% city. So if they deduct it, we will pay less than we would have paid, but it's not necessarily a, that they're paying us to do it.
Okay.
Sandy Beach, Bull Launch, the tribes have signed off on that. They're trying to get people, to write people to sign all the documents and get them sent back, because our archaeological team is ready to go, so as soon as that's back, they'll start. It's still late, so I don't know about the bidding timeline for this year. Anyone had any problems with the food trucks? Anyone heard any problems with the food trucks at Sandy Beach? I haven't either, it seems to be going all right.
Heard anything, yeah.
They've stopped down there a couple of times in the weekend, and people seem like they're really happy with them.
Good. We have a meeting Thursday about 977 Pinnacle Drive. 9:30 Pinnacle Drive was a storm drainage issue. I sent you an email, you can review it, but the storm drainage work is required. We received 3.83 inches of rain in two hours, that's a little over 100-year storm. So having flooded areas is not gonna be unusual, seeing as that most stormwater drainage systems are built from, to the five to 15-year category. So you've got 75 years that's not flowing underground, so from the video, I saw it work pretty well. There's maybe a few problems out on the golf course, but essentially the golf course, it just spread out across the golf course, so it looked like it worked as designed. The other area, the other area, it was Ferry Drive and Woodland Beach Road.
That's correct.
Yeah, that, that area has, we've made improvements in there three times, but that drainage area is so big and never had any storm drainage. So there's just no place for it to go. There's that one outlet that runs between the houses there, off of Ferry, and that pipe's as big as you're gonna get between those houses, so unless we buy a house there on Ferry and tear it down, we're not gonna make a lot of substantial improvements to that drainage. We've done about everything we can do to date. The budget documents are out, the department heads have them, the new budget book, the capital projects stuff, and the budget are out, and they're working on them, so they should have those back in about two weeks, so you guys can start to look forward to September. Any other questions?
Did anybody contact you about the flooding that happened up in the Brookstone area? Up in the new, okay. I saw a bunch of it floating around on Facebook, and I just didn't know if anybody, anybody had contacted you.
No, I haven't heard anything, is it on, on the far east end there, or is it in those cul-de-sacs?
No, it's right there where the new subdivision portion of it was just built on the entrance into Brookstone. Right by the church.
Oh, okay. That's, that's meant, that's meant to fill up. So that's the way the, the subdivider designed it. It'll, it'll flow around, but it, that, that water's gonna fill in that area, and it's all supposed to be designed to be able to flow out to the, to the northwest.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't flow very well. Anyway, I noticed that the tower's down, so that's good.
Yep.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Steve?
I do.
Go ahead.
Doug, has there been any movement on, or any report as far as coronavirus here in the city?
No, we don't get any reports on that, the county gets all that, and they keep that confidential, so we, they don't break it out by city, as far as I know. The only one that does is Watertown, and that's because they have their own health department.
Is it good, Doug? Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay, I think that's it, Steve, so that means we move on to item eight. Acceptance of the minutes of the Plan Commission of April 28th, 2020, the Joint Rock Lake Committee Minutes of March 3rd, 2020, the Parks Board Minutes of January 15th, 2020, the Parks Board Minutes of June 17th, 2020, and the Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes of May 6th, 2020 will go on record as written. Excuse me. That's much better. Item nine, Council Business, we'll go to item A, the presentation of the 2019 financial statements. Is Chuck on and available, Steve?
He is on.
I'm on via the phone.
Chuck, I will show the, the documents, I will share the page. And so just tell me what page you're on.
Yep, will do. Okay, we are going to use the summary financial report.
Yep, I got that.
Let's see, okay. So if we go to page two on that, which is the independent auditors report. This is the, now it's, it recognizes that it's a summary report, but, yep, yep.
I need to, I need to share my desk.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, page two is the independent auditors report. Now, this is modified a little bit because we're using a summary document here, but for the full document, you did get a clean opinion for 2019, for the, the full financial statements. As has been in the past, ever since I've been working on this job, you've gotten a clean opinion, and it is the best opinion you can get. It basically says that the financial statements are presented in, fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the City of Lake Mills, including the utilities, okay? So first thing to note about that is it's in all material respects. We obviously don't look at every transaction. I always tell people, you wouldn't wanna pay us to do that, and we wouldn't wanna spend the time to do that. But we, we look at enough that we feel comfortable in giving us, giving you a clean opinion, so it is in all material respects. If you wanna flip to the combined balance sheet, Steve, that's page four.
All right.
Okay, that, we, we showed two years here, 18 and 19. A couple items to mention between, differences between 18 and 19. Cash and investments were about the same. It varies based on when they run checks to pay, pay bills, and how much money comes in before the end of the year for tax purposes. So sometimes you have a little more, people pay a little sooner, they pay before the end of the year. Other times, they, they wait, so that, that kind of is what varies the, varies the cash. In addition, if you've got some big bills, maybe outstanding near the end of the year, if you pay them in January versus December, that's gonna affect your cash also. You will see there is some restricted cash about, right near the line, it says total assets, a couple lines above that. That includes unspent bond proceeds. So in, in your case, you, you borrow money in most years for either projects for the utility or the city, or both. And typically, at the end of the year, you don't have all of those monies spent out, okay? Projects take some time to complete, so there's always some carryover from one year to the next. And that money that's left over from previous bond issuances are in the restricted cash accounts. Okay? Accounts receivable are down somewhat. In the accounts receivable area, that's mostly the utility. The other receivables can vary year to year, you know, and the accounts receivable with utility, it, the electric utility, it, there's a difference when they do meter reading dates and, and some of that kind of stuff. So it could vary from year to year. Plus, if you have a PCAC adjustment that goes the opposite direction, that's, that's gonna affect that, that receivable also. You see the special assessments are very similar from year to, last year to this year. And the loan receivable, you have a revolving loan fund, and the, you haven't made any loans out of that revolving loan fund in recent years, but you are getting payments on loans that are outstanding. And this is the, the remaining principal on, on those balances. But then you've got some due from other funds and due from other governments. That varies again with, with how transactions are done. If you go down a little farther, you have advances to other funds. The advances principally are for TIF development. So, you know, you, you're starting to crank up the development in, I think it's TIF number six. And a lot of that is funded through, from a cash perspective, through the, through the city. I suspect you'll be issuing debt if you haven't already for that. To, particularly if you're gonna be doing more improvements there. It should have its own debt to be able to, to support the expenditures instead of necessarily using city cash. There's nothing wrong with that, but it does put somewhat of a strain on the city if you, if you're using city funds to advance it to the TIF instead of having some outstanding debt to, to do improvements. So, and then you've got capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation. You can see it goes up, well, you've, you've had a lot of debt that you've taken on in the last few years for improvements, whether it be we're doing streets or making improvements to the utility, new water and sewer lines, that type of thing. And this is net of depreciation, so obviously you add fixed assets, they get depreciated over time, but the depreciation is typically anywhere from, I would, for infrastructures, anywhere from 10 to 30 years. Down below that, you have some crazy things called the food outflows of resources. These are items principally related to Wisconsin Retirement System activity. As I've mentioned in the past, it's not anything that you can actually go out and spend, and it varies from year to year depending on the actuarial results that the Wisconsin Retirement System has for their retirement plan and their, the LIF is a life insurance fund. Looking down at the liability side, again, you've got the due to other funds, and it matches what's due to other funds up on top. You, the amounts due to other governments, that's principally taxable, money that will be paid to the school district and the county, and that, you, you collect part of that and then turn it over to those underlying taxing jurisdictions. And then right down near the total of, total liabilities, you have long-term obligations. As I mentioned, you've added some debt in the last year. Both the city debt and utility debt increased. You know, you've got a lot of ongoing projects, you, all kinds of stuff, new streets, like you said, water, sewer, you've got meter changeout in, projects going with the utilities, so a lot of stuff going on in there that obviously can't be funded from, from internal generation of tax revenue or user fees, so it, it has to be taken out in debt, and it will be paid back over time. Unavailable tax rule, that's some of the stuff I talked about, the monies that you'll be collecting for other, other taxing jurisdictions and repaying them too. There's also some stuff for the Wisconsin Retirement System pension. There's some outflows up above, there's inflows down below here. And then you have your equity position, general fund, six and a half million dollars, other funds. The net position principally is your, is your utilities. So if you wanna flip the page, Steve, to page five, this is the revenues from 18 and 19 comparison. Up about a million dollars overall. Some of the items that changed from 18 to 19. The library got a donation from an estate that, that added some, you see the donation line, about six, seven lines up from the bottom, that was due to that. State shared revenues and bond proceeds were also up. About a quarter of the way down under intergovernmental revenues, you'll see the state share taxes went from 348 up to 458 roughly. And then way down to bottom, the bond proceeds, proceeds from long-term debt, that went up about 800,000. So those are the big items of, of change. Sewer utility, pretty close to what it was, the water had a rate increase, and that's reflected, 2019, I believe, had a full 12 months of the, of the new rate. The electric, down a little bit, but again, some of that has to do with the PCAC adjustments. So that's the revenue side, so if we flip the page and go to page six. This is the expenditure side. You know, Public Works, you, sewer, water, electric, utility, those numbers pretty much follow what the revenue side is doing. You can see the water utility, last year had 1.4 million of, in 18, had 1.4 million of expense. And compared to, they had about 1.2 million of revenue. This year, they, they turned that around somewhat. 1.4 million of revenue and 1.3 million, 1.35 roughly of, of expense. So went from a deficit with, with the rate increase, it now has a positive addition to the position for the year. Revenues exceeded the expenses. You can see there's a lot of, down in the capital outlay area, a lot of expense in the public works area, up about 1.8 million down there. And then the debt service shows down below. You're obviously paying off principal as, as you go through your debt schedules. Interest and other financing costs. You know, the, the interest rates are really pretty good right now, which is even though you're adding debt, you can see that the interest actually went down some last year. And part of that is because the rates that you're getting now are relatively favorable on the long-term debt. So I guess if there's any good time to do projects, it's, it's when the rates are down. Then if we go to page seven, this kind of just shows a snapshot of change from one year to the next in, in fund balance. Okay, that's the equity that we're talking about. You can see the general fund had an increase of about half, about a million dollars. A good chunk of that was unspent bond proceeds. I would expect in 2020, that will go back down somewhat because you, you'll be spending some of those excess proceeds that were in the restricted cash I talked about earlier, so that will get spent out in 2020. When I say all of that, including, okay, there's capital projects, there's the loan fund, recycling fund, library, the enterprise funds. You know, when you look at it, the overall picture, the fund balance didn't change much from one year to the next. It went from 31.1 down to just over 31 million, so a little bit of a decrease, but overall, not much. And all of that being said, you know, we don't know how COVID's gonna impact a lot of stuff other than, you know, meetings remotely like, like we're doing tonight. You know, there's always, there's different programs out there right now. I don't know that there's that much for municipalities right now. I know they're talking about in the next round of potentials, you know, assistance, that there will be some for, for governments, because like or not, when the economy goes down, people tend to get behind on paying their taxes. So if you look at the last page, this kind of just gives a, a quick synopsis of the financial information. I talked about the clean opinion, we talked about adding the fixed assets, significant additions for city and utility. Again, there's long-term debt. You know, you've got about, almost 20 million of long-term debt, the state statute limit is around 30 million, so you, you've got some, some area there where you weren't, running up against the debt limit. But the, you're still, I mean, you've, you've got quite a, quite a bit of debt for, for the city, and at some point, it's going to, you're probably gonna end up having to slow down a little bit on, on some of that, just to, what I like to say is digest what you have. Mentioned fund equity, we talked about that somewhat. And then some of the other reports that we issue. You know, we issue a report on internal control and compliance, and we give one for those charged with governance, and then management advisory comments. Not too much different than it has been in the past. too much different than it has been in the past. Number of journal entries that we that we did this year was down somewhat from what it had been in 18. 18, there were a fair number of journal entries that the staff had given us after we showed up on site, mostly because they stuff they discovered as they were getting ready for audit. And they said, okay, we know about these already. Just can you post these instead of giving us a whole new trial balance? And we we did that. As you city bookkeeper gets more experience, I would expect a number of journal entries and the that type of thing will will decrease over time. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's going on in the city. There's a lot of information to digest and processes to to learn about. And, you know, once there was a couple of years under their belt, things will get more of the second nature for them. There'll be less journal entries. There'll be less, I guess, issues with potential, oh, Jesus, got coded to the wrong account. And that just comes with time and experience. Nothing, nothing different than what I see at at other municipalities and and audit clients when they have when they have new staff on onboard. So. That's the extent of my report tonight. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, if you got any questions, go ahead and bring them up now. Betsy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, Chuck's Chuck's done a really good job overviewing the the report. I'm very pleased with with how this turned out.
And certainly, if if someone has questions after the fact, they think of something, oh, I forgot I was going to ask Chuck this. Get your question to Betsy, she'll forward them to me, and I will I will get you an answer and explanation as as soon as possible.
Okay. Does that sound good for everybody? All right. Thank you, Mr. Prager. And with that, we'll move, we'll move on to item B, nine B, which is discussion decision on Rock Lake Activity Center Multi-Use Facility. And I'm not sure there's going to be any decision, but my understanding is going to be a little discussion. Is that correct, Steve?
There's certainly could be discussion. There should be people there tonight to can present what's happened at the Rock Lake Activity Center. So if they're willing to do that report, you saw my memo. If at some point in time, someone wants to bring forward the options, the staff will certainly put together a report on how to comply with the original idea of purchasing the building and do it through a revenue, a special revenue account, rather than the way we were originally looking at it, because some of the conditions have changed that I noted in the memo. So if you let's let the people that are there
Okay. So with that, even though it is an agenda item, I still would like to suspend the rules. Do you have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to let him speak.
Thank you. That was Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was Doug for the second. Let's go ahead and call that roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. All right. The floor is yours.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for allowing us to speak and then having us on the agenda for tonight. I just wanted to kind of go through a quick recap of the last couple of years, and I'll keep it brief because for the most part, a lot of you have been involved with this. Prior to 2016, 17, Carol Burrows, who's in attendance here tonight, she kind of started getting this going, all with the idea of having a senior center here in Lake Mills. And because of her passion and desire to get this going, we have then moved to fast forward to 2018, 19 timeframe, which is when or sorry, 2017 timeframe is when an ad hoc committee was formed. And so several council members were also on that board as were on that ad hoc committee as well. Really, after that.
I'm going to interrupt for a minute. Could we ask him to step back a step because we can't see his face? There we are. Thank you.
Good one. After the ad hoc committee, we really started to get things going behind the scenes after we had kind of that big idea. And so moving forward to 2018, 19 timeframe is when the council here approved that compliance loan for our Rock Lake Activity Center. And as we could see the improvements happening there at the center, we started seeing and hearing about membership. And the buzz was around the community about what was happening there. And as a result, you saw a lot of increase in memberships, which to me says that our citizens here are really interested in something like this, a community center, which was the idea, the goal, the vision of this ad hoc committee. So also in 2019, the rec department and the Club 55 Senior Center also came together. And through that merger, we have then also tried to fill out that that vision of eventually moving into the Activity Center as the multi-generational Community Center that that the vision is. Which through a lot of work, a lot of hard work, I want to give a shout out to Susan Maloney of Rock Lake Activity Center. She got us a grant as well, which allowed us to add on to the Fort Healthcare Room to really make it a nice inviting place for our senior center. So with all those improvements and with all the things that we've been doing, we fast forward to this year and pre-COVID time, we kind of found ourselves in interesting time with or a transition time with Susan Maloney retiring, and then us saying, hey, this is a great time for us to get involved in Rock Lake Activity Center. And from that, we've developed like a three phase plan, which would hopefully then take us through this vision of the ad hoc committee. Currently, we're in the beginning stages of the phase one of the plan, which with the current director or the previous director now retired, Rock Lake Activity Center and the rec department are working together to work out a contract where we would actually become the director per se for the organization. And so that's phase one, and we're we're in work. So this is actually what brings us here tonight. Phase two, which Steve has mentioned in your memo, is the idea that would really get us to the next step, which I think our relationship is the really that launch pad for the city to step in. Phase two would be the rec department would assume a lot of the or all of the programming revenue and expenses. So all that money would actually come through the rec department through Fund 80, as it's mentioned in the memo. And then Rock Lake Activity Center would actually transition into a foundational group for the Community Center. And the board would really be focusing on quality programmings. How can we get them as high quality as possible? Facility enhancements, and then really the overall success of the organization through an advisory board, and then also as a fundraising mechanism for just the things that we really want to do to take this to the next level. As a as a result, also, the council then, you must all decide at some point to acquire the facility through the special revenue fund that Steve has prepared in that memo. And he'll probably go deeper into that as well. But at that point, is really where that phase two really starts and actually is in place. For the rec department through the school district, the really the the smart timeframe for us was January, January of 2021, because of like payroll that would happen and keeping people and then us on what would be the typical tax return timeframe. So that's why we're kind of the goal would be January of 2021. And then phase three is the ultimate vision, which is whenever that may happen, but that's kind of moving in the direction of what that ad hoc committee had discussed. So that's all I've really got prepared for you. And we're available for questions. Carol, do you have any desire to speak?
No.
Okay.
I I I was here in June of 2016, saying this very thing, saying we need a community center. So I'm really pleased that it's come this far. I think Ben has worked really hard, Ben and his group and in the school district. And, you know, the ad hoc committee did have that vision. And I think it's it's starting to show that it's it's going to come to fruition. Thank you.
Yes, Ben Dayton. I am the Recreation Director for the School District's Recreation Department.
And Carol Burrows, a resident of Lake Mills, 169 West Lake Park Place.
All right. Before the rest of you jump into questions, I just had one question, sort of clarifying question that some people may ask, just because we're talking about a lot of different funding sources and things like that. And I guess, Ben, I would put this to you. What if Fund 80 went away? How would we maintain that program?
I'm actually going to defer to Wendy, our Business Director of the School District.
Okay.
So I'm Wendy Rafter, I'm the Director of Business Services. It's kind of hard to hear me, so I'm going to take it off. For the Lake Mills Area School District, Fund 80 is one of our funds that the school district can hold. We are able to levy in Fund 80. It's not something that will go away. I mean, we would have to shut down the whole recreation program and the whole community service programs that we offer. So it's not something that the state would just, you know, just close down. It is something that's here to stay. And and the school board, I just want to add too, we've talked about this with the school board, and they are in favor of moving forward. But but they say that this has to be a joint venture with the city, with the acquiring of the building, because the building for us is a little more of a challenge. We have to go to the public to to approve the purchase of any kind of property and things like that. So the the school district really wants to work together with the city on this project. So we hope you are in favor of it as we are.
All right. Thank you. That's that's a great answer. The other question that I had, I had just had it in my head here. I hate when that happens. Goodness, if anybody else has any questions, go ahead. And hopefully, I'll remember what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I've got one, Doug. What, how would the foundation, if you're moving to a foundation, how would that work with the Fund 80, with the school district and with the city? I'm not I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
Sure. So really, it's kind of that three legged stool that we're talking about. The foundation, which is what which is the current Rock Lake Activity Center owns the building. And after the sale of the building or giving this that transaction between the city, Rock Lake would actually not own the building anymore, but they would still provide, they would still be a valuable part of the stool, as I'm talking about, in the sense that they're a nonprofit that could be similar to friends groups or a foundation where its goal, its mission is to support something, right? And so their purpose would be to provide be a advisory group for the program, and then also as a fundraising mechanism outside of Fund 80. And so they would be kind of that, let's say, we wanted to do something big, big ticket replacements or like fitness renovation, they would be an organization that could actually do that and focus on just that versus the day to day operations of that they're currently doing right now. So really, it's kind of leveraging all the different avenues, including grants that may be available. Government organizations aren't always accepted into certain kind of grant categories. So 501(c)(3) s or nonprofits have access to those grant monies as well. So that's another avenue for us to raise funds outside of the community too, or or even within the community as far as grants are concerned.
One other, what, yeah, one other question. Well, to clear this, who is actually doing the day to day governance of this? The rec department? Who?
So day to day operations would fall under the rec department. And similar to this fashion, we would have some sort of meeting with the Advisory Council, which would be the Rock Lake Activity Centers Board as well, similar to like the library board or the library foundation, where they give input as well to the organization.
Does that answer your question, Doug?
One other is the foundation and this council.
Repeat that again.
Is the foundation then the advisory council to the rec to the administration of the Activity Center?
That's kind of the idea, yeah. Or at least a component of that for sure.
Okay, so I remember. Go ahead, Steve, go ahead.
In the memo, they said this would be a revenue neutral type item. I'm guessing with this being owned by the city, I'm going to use the COVID that we're in now, we've got city hall lockdown. If it becomes a property of the city, or we could end up locking down a little quicker or shutting business down for different issues that the private organizations might not be doing at this time? Because that would be a big impact on the revenue.
Well, first of all, it was a goal to be revenue neutral. Didn't guarantee that it was going to be revenue neutral. It actually could make money or or be at a slight loss. That would depend on how you guys adjust that on an annual basis. The the fact that you have certain types of of events that occur would definitely impact that. I don't know that, as I remember, Rock Lake shut down pretty quick. And most of those types of of centers were shut down by the state really quick. So I don't know that that we would have any better or worse impact on it. But we would definitely feel the revenue issue just like anybody else. To a certain extent, they they sell annual memberships. So that would be a part of it. There would also be a part of the programs that the Recreation Center puts on. There would also be a part of the programs that the Recreation Center puts on there that generate funds at that time period. So there's some mix that would go on there, Steve, so we'd have to look at it. But the, the goal is to make sure that under normal circumstances, you come as close to being able to make the payment as, as needed.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and that feeds right into the pseudo-question I was trying to come up with there earlier. And I know we've, we've talked about this in the past, Ben, and I know that Carol was in those meetings, that my concern is to make sure that it's, it can pay for itself. So we don't have to worry about taking tax money from, from citizens to repair the building over and over again. And we can make it a, really it needs to be profitable to where it can self-sustain itself as much as possible. So that's the, really the only concern I have with it. And, and don't take my concerns as being negative that I'm against it. It's just a concern that I have. Does anybody else have anything?
Will there be some kind of memorandum of understanding so that the various roles are made clear as to who's in charge of what?
I would expect, yep. I expect that we would expect that, and I'm pretty sure the school district would expect that. You don't want to get into a relationship like this and not, and not have it. I talked to Dr. Olson about it and we discussed an MOU.
And then as far as this ad hoc committee's concerned that we've been discussing, if, if it's going to be something long-term, I would like to have the committee be made something more than ad hoc, so that there are people who are appointed to the committee, just like we run our other committees through the city, because ad hoc becomes very informal, whereas create an actual board or committee that's long-term so that, that rules and responsibilities and, and duties are made more clear.
We, the, the ad hoc committee was just to study the possibility of the issue. It was not to, to control any long-term agreement. I would assume that at that point in time, we would look at how we would do that. I don't know that we want to create another committee. Maybe we put it under the parks or, you know, we look at it as, as something where it all comes to the council on a regular basis. You're going to get the budget for it anyways. But those are up to you. I mean, it's going to be under Special Revenue Fund. You're going to see the revenues on it like the, the sanitation fund. And we'll try and keep those fees in line with how that runs.
Would this committee be responsible for putting a strategic plan together for their business operation? Because this is going to be three different parties working on this strategic plan and operations, and they all got to jive together.
Yeah, I would hope that would get spelled out in the MOU as to how we plan on that, doing that. Generally, um, we put together a five-year plan and I assume that they do too as a government organization of that size and that revenue. So we, we'd sit down and hammer that out. And then each board would look at it and finalize the agreement.
Yeah, so at this point right now, I think the first step would be for a council member to take this under their wing and work it both with the, the school district and with the Rock Lake and with the attorneys to figure out what would work best. And then we would work on, you know, bringing this up again for whatever type of vote that we had to.
I would really like to have authorization to write a report on how that will work so that we have a basis to start on. Because I, I haven't, you know, we've talked about this, but we haven't done a lot of detailed review of what the concepts would be. I'd like to have something put together before we start running down the road.
Okay, so what is your recommendation then for the next step? Who does what?
Council member just asked me to put together a report or a group council members or the council here just says, hey, prepare the report for, and we'll get her going.
I would move that.
Go ahead, Steve.
Doug just said he would, oh.
Oh, Doug, you said.
Yeah, I would move that.
Second.
Now, Steve.
Would we take that, um, that report that you read up, make like a work session or something that kind of work through different ideas or details on it? Or kind of explain what your steps would be on this?
That's definitely a possibility. I mean, I would see that as a very logical process to do a work session on it. I mean, you know, you know what it's like at a council meeting. It's not the same.
Yeah, but a work session would be.
A lot more open, we can go different, yeah.
Yeah, a work session would still be open. Which is good.
What is the motion that's on the floor?
The motion is to ask Steve to work on putting together, what did you call it, Steve?
A report for a recommendation on how to make this work.
Just, okay. So that's what it is. So we have that motion and it's seconded. Go ahead, Steve.
Dan, if Dan wants to do the wording on it, I'm not that great at that, but I, I know that I need.
What I have is motion authorizing city manager to prepare a report on, and that's where I'm kind of stuck. What, what exactly is this report going to entail on how the three entities are going to work together for the R-LAC? Or is it broader than that?
I think it's narrower than that, really.
Okay.
Because I, what we want to do is make sure that the special revenue fund is going to do what we want. Now, once we get there, I think that we, then we can start to sit down and work on an MOU. And then we can prepare. So once we get through this special revenue review and determine that that's the direction we want to go and I can put it into the budget, then we start. Because till the end of the year, we could hammer out an MOU. But that first decision is, is if we're going to look at purchasing this, it's where the money's coming from, how we're going to structure the account and how we're going to expect the payments to come.
Okay.
So I, I think it's a report on how the special revenue fund will handle this process.
And then I added at the end of that statement, um, and the overall direction of the entity, the R-LAC itself. I, I guess I don't want to isolate these 901(c)(3)'s, but, um, broader picture, I mean, the, the property and the operations of it.
Because the big issue for us right now is purchasing the property.
Correct.
And that's if the, you know, the special revenue fund doesn't work or, you know, then, then we either have to take a severe turn or, or we have to say, no, we're not interested. I believe it will work. I reviewed it somewhat, but I haven't gone through, I haven't got the numbers. I'll have to sit down with Ben and someone from R-LAC and be, and be able to put those numbers together.
Okay, so we have the motion figured out, correct? Mr. Drescher?
I think so.
And that is the motion you want to make? Doug?
Yes, that's mine.
Okay, and Vicki, you're still good with your second?
Yep. It's good.
Does anybody else have any other discussion on this? Okay, let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mishment?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so that means we're going to do some studying and we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you all for showing up. All right, Item C is currently tabled and it was tabled because we didn't have the, the CSMs, right? The appraisals, that's right. So we will need somebody to take this off the table if we're ready to vote on it tonight.
I'll move to take it off the table.
Mr. Fields? Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Fritsch seconded. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote on this.
Mishment?
No.
I'm sorry, is that no?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-1.
Okay, so it's currently off the table. Could we get the title of that read, please?
Resolution 20-26, authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located in tax increment District Number Five.
Okay, so all we were waiting on was the appraisals. And this will actually approve the sale to the entity that has the offers in, correct? Mr. Drescher?
That's correct.
And as we know right now, it looks like there would be some condos in these different locations down there on South Main Street. Obviously, they still have to go through a lot of process as far as the, the building of them and the approval of the building. And I don't know, maybe not mentioned for anything that's out of the ordinary on these buildings. So this is just approving the sale of these properties. So with that said, do we have a motion of adoption for Resolution 20-26?
I'll move adoption, Resolution 20-26.
Mr. Fields moved it. Do we have a second? I will second it. So now we can have some discussion.
I think we need to look at the purchase price as it relates to the appraisals that we just received today.
I know that, that, um, first of all, the, the requirement isn't that all we have to have is an appraisal. The appraisal and the price don't have to match. Second of all, what we do with the property, Vicki, is generally, we purchase the property, we tear down the building and we have to go through all the environmental assessments and everything else. In this case, they're buying the property as-is. So we actually end up saving money by selling that one property as-is rather than going through the process that we did with both 1117 and 1204, which is to have an environmental assessment, go through and have the demolition done. So if you look at the value of the property, once the building is removed, it's pretty much in line with what the offer is. To top that off, if you look at the CSM and see how much of the property is being removed from that lot, the house actually crosses the property line. So you're not making a comparison of apples to apples anyways. A lot smaller and the property would have to be demoed, which obviously is what we expect, because when we do tids like this, we're expecting the revenue generation from the new property to be much greater than the revenue generation from the old property.
Thanks, Steve. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments, discussion points?
Yeah, if, if I may.
Go ahead.
So the, the appraisal on 113 Sandy Beach Road, that, that does add significant value compared to what has been offered. The general consensus is that 1117, the corner property with the right-of-way taken out of it, is not, not worth much as it sits alone right now. So the value there is combining it with 113 Sandy Beach Road. I believe based on the offer and the appraisal on 1204 and the, the property that's in back of that, those two parcels that are CSMed into one, based on the CSM that's been prepared, that is definitely in line with fair market value based on that appraisal. There may be a way to move forward on the sale of 1204, because I know Kason is, is interested in, in developing as soon as possible on that property. And perhaps the council could hold off on 1117 and 113 until we have more insight into how that is actually going to come together and move forward, if that's where the question is, Vicki.
Yeah, well, my concern is for selling it at, at, uh, below market value. I, I understand some of Steve's contentions about it, you know, they do make some sense. And it might be prudent to just take a look at it, um, to discuss it a little bit further. I don't have a problem with the appraisal as it relates to the offer on the parcel that's on the east side.
That's 1204, yep.
Yes, ones on the west side that I'm a little bit concerned. I realize if you tear down a house, it costs money to do that. And so certainly that would, would have an impact on whether the appraisal is a fair price for it or if we need to sell it for less than what it's appraised at, because the appraisal takes into account the actual structure that's there that won't be there anymore. I understand about the reduction of the lot because of taking some right-of-way. I just want to make sure that the council is comfortable with selling those two parcels on the west side, given the appraisal that we received this morning. If the rest of the council's comfortable, I'm, you know, I'm only one vote on the council, but I just wanted to have a discussion so that we're sure that that's what we want to do.
I, I put up the CSM. I don't know if you can see it.
It's, it is also attached in your council packet. 1117 CSM.
I can't access my council packet on my granite because, because I'm using my iPad for this.
Okay, it should be up now. The CSM, Dan?
Yeah.
For some reason, you're still controlling the screen. The CSM, if you look at the one for 1117 and 113, you see that we've taken off a substantial amount of, of property on the south edge, which matches up with the, the line at Sandy Beach Road, which gives us a 60-foot right-of-way on Sandy Beach Road. Because if you remember, Sandy Beach Road currently is a 30-foot right-of-way. And our standard street width is 32 feet back a curb to back a curb. Actually, our standard street width is 34 feet back a curb to back a curb. The one on, on Sandy Beach Road right now is 28 feet back a curb to back a curb. So you can't even get a sidewalk on that street. So what we've looked at is, is one of the goals here was to get enough width on Sandy Beach Road all the way down that we could get a standard street in with a sidewalk on at least one side. that we could get a standard street in with a sidewalk on at least one side. So when you look at that lot, you can see that the house is over that property line. And this house and this garage would have been demoed anyways. You lose a pretty good chunk of that piece of property. So when you look at the overall lot and what they proposed to put on it, I believe that we're getting a pretty good deal.
Did the appraisal take into account the loss of the lot to the right-of-way?
It did not, as far as I know. What do you know?
No, it did not. It was prepared as the parcel currently sits, and this CSM hasn't been recorded or prepared formalized appropriately.
Okay, well, that makes a substantial difference. If that's the case, I guess I don't really have an objection then.
All right, anybody else have any comments or discussion that they would like to bring on this?
Just, yeah, I just want to say that I'm happy that we have the opportunity to widen Sandy Beach Road, because it certainly needs it.
Yeah, if you remember, part of our discussions when we did TID Number 5 was, is that as we if we purchased lots along Sandy Beach Road, we would take right-of-way off those lots to get the street width up to size.
I'm glad to see that it's coming to reality.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion of adoption or approval to sell both of these properties based on the information that we have currently. So we will call a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That brings us on to ordinance 1214, and I think for the second reading, we just need the title read, correct?
Correct. Ordinance 1214, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcels 246-0713, 2422-003, and 246-0713, 2422-004. Tobol's tolling and repair, Tobol Trust, and Daniel and Tara Tobol, 1110 and 1122, South Main Street.
All right, does anybody have any more discussion they want to make on this one, or can we move this to the third reading?
I do, I do have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Steve.
The conditional use site plan will be going before the Plan Commission in August. And I'm sure that we'll start to see a developers' agreement coming in very shortly, that the council will start to have to work through for the TID agreements. Are there any questions on either one of those?
I'm just wondering, is there anything, should we be prepared for any unusual things with this?
No, I think the site plan meets the requirements. Obviously, it's standard for us to have a conditional use permit for a service, an auto service business in the planned business zone, so there's nothing unusual there. The site has a lot of work on it to bring it up to standard, so we probably will look at investing more of the increment in the normally, we do about a 50% share on the increment. This one, we're probably going to need to do 100%. We've also filed for a W E D C CDI grant for about $250,000 to help with this project. Buildings, the initial building is going to be about $2.5 million. And then they have a lot of high-tech equipment that they're going to be putting in there, and and they'll have about 10 employees in there, so it's pretty standard, meets a lot of the standard things that we would look at.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll move that to the third reading. And that brings us to item 10, which is recommendations for future agendas. I know we had discussed some stuff about the branding, and I know that should be coming up soon. But I'm not sure about anything else right now.
Yeah, we did get that email with the different ideas.
Yeah, we did, yep.
And I thought there were some really good ideas in that one. So much better than what we had before, I thought.
So do you think we're at a point?
A date?
Yeah, and that was, we're kind of waiting on Steve to work with with the, yeah. I don't know why I can't think of her name right now. Yeah.
And we talked about maybe doing like a six o'clock work session?
That's what you talked about, yeah.
Here, I think it'd be much easier if we could do this in person and work through.
Yeah, if it's possible, for whoever feels comfortable with it, yeah.
Anyone vote that?
Okay. Is anything else coming up, Steve, that we should be concerned about other than what you've already mentioned?
I think that Betsy has an item that will be on the agenda for the fourth.
Yes, I did. The length of service award program closeout needs a resolution to close that out. This is for the fire department. And so we are, so I'll be submitting information regarding the closeout of that program and let you know what we have in it's stead.
Okay, and then I did ask the chief to come speak to us, the chief of.
That was the other one.
Yeah. Trying to get his perspective.
Perspective?
Yeah. Trying to remember what I asked him. First is on the different protests and different events that we've seen in the town. And then also, if there's been any talk or concern about removing the officers from the school district and things like that, so I just want to get his perspective on where he thinks things have been going, and that'll be on the next agenda. All right, if there's nothing else, going, going. We are adjourned. Thank you all.